Line unmuted.
All right, it's six o'clock. We're going to get started for the most important events today.
Father, we're here again thanking you for life, health, and strength. We're here blessed in your name because your name was worthy to be blessed. Father, we as commissioners come to do what is right for all our citizens, and we thank you. We thank you for the knowledge to work and to do good. Father, now we pray for the fathers of our country that's not doing as well as we are. Pray for low people in Ukraine. Pray for the tsunami in Japan. And we pray right now for unrest all over this world. We thank you. Father, you knew this would happen from the foundation of the world, and we now thank you. In helpless as he do, what we know is right. We bless your name now. In Jesus' name, my brother. Amen.
Our prayer to Jesus is to declare the United States of America and to deliver our hope with his hands on our nation, on our God, in the vision of liberty and justice for all.
Welcome you out for a meeting this Tuesday, January the 2nd, 24:15. We've got a conference line set up. Our number there is 1-917-900-1022. Access code is 32347-PAL. This is not a toll-free number, and you may be subject to long-distance charges according to your long-distance plan. If this conference opens a meeting for public comment, please follow the below instructions. If you leave to speak, please dial a star five. The moderator will unmute your line when it's your turn to speak and notify you by announcing the last four digits of your telephone number. Please announce your name and address, and you will be allowed to speak for three minutes. Any person wishing to address the board regarding an agenda item will be given three minutes for comment. A commenter may only speak one time for each agenda item. With that said, we'll move to number three. Before we move, did you all get the notice to table item fifteen?
Yes.
All right, so.
Motion to approve the revised agenda.
Second, a motion and a second to approve our revised agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Look at our consent items. Does anyone have any consent items? Any questions, discussion?
None.
All right, so can we, yeah, the motion to approve?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay, yeah, a motion to approve and a second by Mr. Figueroa. I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Number eleven. The board to hold a public hearing set for this date at 16:00 or as soon as possible through the public input for an application for a special event permit mud bog submitted by Iron Horse Mud Ranch. These everything events in February, March, and October of 2024. So this is the public hearing. I'll open it up to the public before we ask any comments. It sounds like it's a public. Do you have any comments in regards to our mud bog on the given dates, February, March, and October? There, do you have anybody in the line? So, did you, anything you wanted to say?
No, same as usual.
So, any comments from the board?
Just a couple of housekeeping items. Before, if the board would approve contingent upon receiving an updated certificate of insurance, the one that's attached, I think it expired in October. And I think that's about, October and November is usually when you have it.
Yeah, it's bringing it out that time.
Right. And the board will need to be listed as additionally insured. And just as a reminder to the board, the schedule that is attached does list events lasting until midnight. I think that was a point of, you know, that was some discussion the last time.
Say it again, I'm sorry.
So the schedule that's attached shows the mud bogging, I think, from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., but the tugs and music runs till midnight on the attached schedule.
And the gates are open twenty-four hours a day.
Yes, sir. Correct. People can come in, and I park twenty-four hours a day.
All right.
Jim?
Would you have any comments from the board? We have, uh, yes, a week. We don't have approval to know.
Is music for the same time as it was in October? I was trying to remember if it was.
We, you guys had it. We shut it down at 11:00. There were no complaints, no calls, nobody complained. So it was subject to review. If you guys didn't have any complaints, no neighbors, no nobody complained, that you would consider us letting us do it till midnight.
We're looking to go ahead and approve. Let's have another one up here. So, anyone else from the board? No more comments. I'll request a motion to approve.
Motion to continue upon that insurance being.
Yeah, I can.
Continue upon the, I think that's worked out. So we have a motion for the commissioner then. You have a second?
Yeah.
Another second. Commissioner Dimpson, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. We got a little trouble. The board to further discuss the fifty and ten counties. So we have, Mr. Dimpson, if you want, maybe kind of, have you guys had any interaction?
Very briefly, but not much. Oh, no. Very briefly, but not much.
Kind of start us off. See, we have a map in the packet. Is this the map that we're going over?
The, I don't know what's in your packet. I think she may have included the 2014, which is the same as the front page of the document I just gave. And I think the balance of what she included in there, she being the commissioner, was the ACLU various versions, I believe.
Right.
Yeah. So what you have in your packet obviously is where we left it at on December nineteenth, I think it was.
Uh-huh.
December nineteenth. And I don't know if their, if the ACLU's option B is in there. That was their kind of parting version after they had seen what, what we had come up with, we being the county. So what I decided to do tonight is I gave you guys some eleven-by-seventeen sheets. The first page of that is the original twelve, or December fourteenth map. No change to that.
Front page.
That's correct. Yes, sir. So to kind of give you guys, guys, an idea of how I have felt that I was approached this is there are several different items that we need to, you know, targets. Targets being that we know that this is a census. We're here to redistrict. We need to even out the populations. As long as we get those within plus or minus ten percent of that deviation from average, we're considered as a community as equal. So my first target is I need to balance population. Second target is it was helpful that ACLU put their, their requirements in the memorandum. And in order to be compliant with the Voter Rights Act, you are obligated, according to them, to achieve an effectiveness number. That effectiveness number had to be somewhere between forty-seven and forty-eight percent. And that is an indication that the expectation that a city member district would be able to elect the candidate of their choice. So I have to have an equal percentage. I need to have assurance that I can have the opportunity to elect a candidate of choice. And then they went a little bit further and said, okay, so let's look at actual voter behavior. And let's look at what the voters in these proposed districts, how they have voted over several elections. So that effectiveness number was actually derived according to the ACLU based on their review of 2018, 2020, and 2022. And then the results of the maps that we gave you guys last time, mine was based on, excuse me, the counties was based on the 2020 election. And the ACLU's was based on the general 2022 election. So that's the starting point. So I know I have to even out the percentages. I need to have somewhere between a forty-seven and forty-eight percent effectiveness number. And I need to look at some of the elections in order to determine, based on these proposed configurations, these voters now have a reasonable chance to elect the candidate of the choice. Those are my targets. So the 2014 map, I gave you the picture of the 2014. And if you look, I mean, I've been doing this right up to the last minute. You'll see it says January second, because I literally finished it just like ten minutes ago. Those maps obviously aren't quite detailed enough for you to discern a lot of it. So I wanted to at least put it in front of your face where you could see it, and then we could drill it down a little bit closer when we get here. But the, behind those first two sheets is the data tables. So the data is driven from the two maps. And let me back up just a hair. The last measure that I got to, as my last target, was by Commissioner Dimpson in that the voter, registered voter percentages, that was included on the county's proposed District Five last time, was at fifty percent. Fifty percent of the registered voters were single race black in that district. He gave the charge to, we need to make this more. So that was, I know that was my objective. So that was the reason for even taking and considering a modification to the 2014 map. And as I'm going through this, I'm remembering more in that when we started talking about elections, the ACLU representative, in realizing that maybe all the elections aren't necessarily representative of local influence, then perhaps we need to blend stuff and start looking at averages. That being an average between the 2020 and the 2022, which is the data file that we have. So I looked at every bit of this. The first sheet, and I do apologize, I tell you that it was at the last minute. And that was the only reason I couldn't print out a highlighted version. I had to print a quick copy. But you can see this is the December fourteenth percentages. That first column is the various populations. Your third column, the percentage at the bottom is nine point three. That has to be less than ten. If you look at the registered voters in the center block, you will see that District Five has fifty percent registered black voters. And then if you look at the, I added this column on the far right. I gave kind of an indication of, because the Bellamy was kind of the initiation of all of this, all the way back in 1983. And what I wanted to do was kind of show you where it was then relative to where it is now today. Underneath the bottom, you will see that at that point in time, there was nine hundred and eighty-five registered voters in the county. Today, that is, at the time of this 2023 numbers, there was nineteen hundred and seventy-six. Twice, a little better than twice. You can see that at that time, there was, the nine eighty-five represented about fourteen percent of the overall registered voter population. The nineteen seventy-six is right there, about thirteen percent. So just a hair lower. Go to far right, you will see that the Bellamy, and looking at the registered voters, the fifty-nine percent that you were keying in on last time, Commissioner Dimpson.
Yes, sir.
You can see that December fourteenth was at a fifty percent there. Looking at the percentage of the whole county, there was aggregated sixty-four percent of all registered black voters was in that one district. The Bellamy case, there was sixty-eight, sir, as district five. That is correct. So if we look at the next sheet, you can see how the, how those districts compared to the various elections. Because this was a point of contention. My assertion to you was that I felt the 2020 election was tremendously more relevant. If you look at the text that is below here, and for the purposes perfectly. So this is the December fourteenth. This is the data that I am going over with the board. This data here indicates the elections that were, excuse me, the elections that were physically on those ballots. So as you can look on the left-hand side there, that is the 2020 primary election. During that election, the December fourteenth District Five had fifty percent black voter participation in the primary and fifty percent black voter participation in the general election. One thing you might notice is that the reason that I feel 2020 was a little more relevant is that you see you have local elections of District One, Three, and Five. And the vast majority of the people that are influenced or collected in this District Five are either from District Five, District One. There are some from District Two as well. So these have met the metric of having to, excuse me, have met the threshold of having to either be forty-seven to forty-eight percent by providing fifty percent for both the primary and the general election. So I didn't have the data right on hand at the last time we met, so I went back today. And I looked at what did the voter behavior for the boundaries that I proposed, or the county proposed behave in the 2022 election. So if you will look at District Five there on that last row, you will see in the primary election, registered black voters represented fifty-five percent of those participating in the 2022 primary election in District Five. Now, you go to the general election, it is a different story. It is fifty-five versus forty-three, forty-three being the black voter percentage. This is the election that the ACLU proposal was keying in on. And what I would suggest to you is let's look at what actually is on that ballot before we start trying to say it is a relevant measure to even consider. And if you look at the primary ballot, you will see that there were District Two, District Four, and, excuse me, District Two and District Four were the only local. The Senate, the school board referendum is actually a county-wide referendum, so it's, it doesn't matter what district you're in. But those are the only two local elections being decided based on districts. Now, when you get over to the general election, you see what I have listed there. What you don't see is District Two and District Four. That is because they were decided as a primary. They didn't go to the general election. So the only matters that you had being discussed in the 2022 general election were either states, or national, or county-wide. There was no district-specific election decisions made during the 2022 general election. So, that being said, the suggestion that the ACLU made at the end of the meeting at the last time, on the nineteenth, was, maybe it would be at least a better comparison to take and at least recognize that the 2022 election is there, and we'll do an average blend of all the elections. So I did that. And in looking at that, I still, with the boundary proposed, hit a fifty percent participation by black voters in that proposed District Five for all four elections. Mind you, my measure to compare against is forty-seven to forty-eight percent. So this is where I left it with you last time, and I know you told me to do better. So I think I did better. If you look on the next sheet, you will see there is a January second version. Thankfully, you're familiar with this. I don't have to go through all of it, because this is the same data type that I just went over. So let's key in on a couple of the percent, or a couple of key points. Looking at the population percentages, yes, those move back and forth because boundaries move back and forth. If you look at the deviation from average percentage. So is this one here? If you look at the deviation from average on this one, what was nine point three percent is now six point seven percent. So we've actually better averaged out or better distributed the populations. If we move over to the 2023 registered voters, because boundaries change, you're grabbing different people and including different people, we are at the percentage of, in District Five, a fifty-one percent. So we moved from fifty percent, I think it was, so I had forty-seven and fifty, and now I'm at forty-five and fifty-one. One went up, but then the other one didn't go down by the same amount. It actually went down by more because there were some others in there. Then if I look at the whole county over there at the far right, what was sixty-four percent, now this revised District Five boundary represents sixty-eight percent of the registered voters in the county of Holt. If we look then at the next sheet, let's see how this, these voters behave in the revised configuration. So if we look at this 2020, which I would support to you that is the more relevant of the two elections, is let's key in on that, that important data, looking at District Five. In District Five, for the 2020 primary election, we had a voter participation of black voters of fifty-two percent. So I've gone from fifty to fifty-two. If we look at it in the general election, we had a participation of black voters of fifty-two percent. Now that is the same as what it was on the December fifteenth table, where we have the District Ones, Threes, and Fives being decided at the local levels in the primary ballots. So let's go down and look at the 2022. And looking at the 2022, we see that for the primary election, which included District Two and District Four, local level decisions, we had a black voter participation of fifty-six percent. It is only again, just like the last one, when you get to the general election of 2022, which you see in this list here, that there are no district-specific decisions being made during that election, we are at a forty-four percent black and fifty-four percent white for that election. Now, that moved from forty-three to forty-four percent. I was able to grab a better dataset of people, of, excuse me, of, I just had to say that, participating voters than I was able to in the 2014, in the, excuse me, in the December fourteenth version. So what I would support to you guys is, I'll tell you thank you, because truthfully, this, this map, to me, this represents a better, a better representation of the district boundaries than I had at the December fourteenth. And I think what you will see noticeably is that we brought it back up to the river boundary. Brought it back up to Holt Road, which this is nearing the way the boundary is today. So this is today. This is the proposal. So you can see the southern boundary is not changing. But what you do notice is that it added a lot of this area. This is kind of the neighborhood that's right there between Puckett and Pizza Hut. So what I saw was that there was a good concentration of, of black registered voters in that area. So I moved it into the mix to try and make those percentages kind of go up some. So I added this area into it. I took that out of District Two. And then this area here, there was a good, a heavier percentage of registered white voters through here. And once it gets above that fifty percent threshold, it works against you. So what you have to try to do is find those census blocks that have registered voters, but have a registered voter percentage that exceeds your registered white voter percentage, or else you're just working against yourself. So I kind of went back and forth with the iterations. You will also see that everything west of the city limits and north of ninety-eight is now part of District One. That reason.
The Lofford Park in.
The Lofford Park is back up in here, so that if you still have Lofford Park in your District Five, yes, sir. But there was a very, very low percentage of registered black voters in this area. So there again, it kind of was defeating the purpose to include those census blocks. It was better for me to take and grab the population from here that had better participation in the elections to try to make that overall percentage bump up a little bit. So I, I think I, I don't think, I, I know, just like I knew last time, that there were targets that were given to me of hit these targets, and I hit them. The targets are moving. So I reacted to a moving target this time, and I believe I have, again, hit every one of those that I need to. If there is something in this that I have missed, obviously pointed out to me. But I feel like I have met the legal obligations that is placed on this board in order to determine the appropriateness of redistricting.
Move District Five up to Ash Street on the west side of the nineteen, I tried.
I had that before. Yes. And the reason being is because I needed to get, there was a good percentage of registered black voters that were in this area. And even so, you can have a registered black voter that's in one, and he may, he or she may not participate in the election. So you still, you may have them as one of the totals, but you can't count them as a percentage in your election results. So I mean, as he, I'm sure, will attest to, there's a lot of moving targets in there, a lot of moving pieces that you got to get all of them to the line in order to come out with something that you, that is compliant with all the measures that we have to.
Mr. Chairperson, as Kenneth stated, I mean, he's gone over this over and over and over, but today I think he's hit every, every goal. but today, I think he's hit every, every goal, and has done an outstanding job going through this exercise.
Let me tell you this, let, I asked for 55%, and in one area, we hit 56, 54. And I think the difference of election was, if you went to the primary, everybody was there for the primary, when the local election, people got elected, then the statewide election wasn't much interest on what this says and what the normal trend. I would like to hear what ACLU says. I can understand some of this, I can understand most of it. But, when we asked for 56%, 55%, and we did go 1% over that in some degree, I don't, I don't know whether I have argument or not. But anything over 50% in 54, 55, 56, 50, is better than half for the, for the District Five.
And what I would suggest to you is, the threshold was documented in the memorandum from ACLU, and it was set at, they, they actually, the, and correct me if I'm wrong, I'm afraid there's logic to this, is that with a high degree of confidence, they believe that the candidate, the preferred candidate could be elected with an effectiveness number, an effectiveness number of 47 to 48%. So that is my target. Anything above that is that safety margin, to ensure that I have that much greater percentage of allowing those people to, of allowing that district to elect a candidate of their choice.
Well, another thing happened too. When we, when we looked at the totals, District Five was at about 3,065 people. The ACLU and everybody else said that it had some validity says it need to be about less than 10% difference. So you had to add 600 people, 500 people to that. And you've done that in this, in this equation.
Yeah, I threw in an extra 100. I was able to grab an extra 100 population as a District Five. And I was very selective about that, because I'm looking for those individuals who are registered and who participate. So that's what I tried to do. You know, it's not a perfect world by any means. It's as perfect as with the time that was allowed to get it to a point that it met the objectives, the legal objectives that are before us. So I know you want to hear from them, so I will, I will move aside and allow them to, to present.
I mean, I'm going to stay right here if everyone's not done. We don't, we don't have a problem with this. You know, we, again, I think it's kind of a happy medium from what we talked about. You had that change pushes the District Two boundary up the whole road, as your school board member in District Two suggested. And then one thing I do like is you took into account the primary electorate as well. We've been sitting here having a food fight about general elections. You got the four election average, I have no issue with this. One thing I'll suggest, not for me, but for the public, is if you could put the streets on so people kind of know where they are, I think that would, I think that would be a good thing. But other than that, I don't have a ton.
I'm sorry, I had it, I had it set at a scale of 10,000, that's why.
You're good.
That was the only reason, because it just gets convoluted.
You know about the, to back your constituents.
I see where everything is, you know, the main changes are District One and Five, I guess.
There was a healthy change to every district in this county. District Three, and a lot of it really cleaned things up. And there are things that I would love to do, but the population just doesn't support it. I'd love to take and pull, and try to use your major roads to bisect the different districts. The populations just don't work. You have to get across them at some point in time.
Let me say this. So tell me, what street north does this boundary stop? Did you went by any street?
Tell me which one you're talking about.
North of, of the county, North Street, District Five.
Ash Street.
Ash Street.
Yes, sir.
Okay. How far does it go west?
City Limits. Well, the city limits down to 98, and then it goes out to Hampton Springs, the same way it is today.
So you take the road and go by the prison?
Yes, sir.
And then we go all the way down to Cope De Grady?
No.
Then go to Cope De Grady?
No, sir, you only get to the river. The same way it is today. That's correct.
Okay, then come back to Puckett Road.
That's correct, yes, sir.
When we get to Puckett Road...
Well, you have to stop first. So this is Golf Course? When you get to Golf Course, you go up, just the way it is today. So you hit Holt, then you turn and go east. And then, when you get to Puckett, you go north. When you get up to, and this is, it's north of Industrial Park. There's a census block that's right in through here, is how, how you wind up having to go this far. But where you come out on 19 is, you know where Lewis Drive is, right there by the Ford Place?
Yes.
That's Lewis Drive. So it comes all the way to here, just past like Target, not Target, Tractor Supply and all, it's right here on Everett's Way. That's where it goes. So then you turn and run up 19 until you get to Jefferson Street. You take Jefferson Street all the way up until you hit Green Street. And then you take Green Street to the west until you hit 19. Then you run up 19 till you hit Ash Street, and you're back to your point again.
I know when we had to move 600, 500 people, it was going to be a difference.
That's an understanding.
It is a quack, man. But I like to hear from them.
Yes, sir.
The ACLU said, see, you probably live with it. And there's one that brought it up. I was wanting 55, but I got 55, 56, 52. So those are numbers I, I probably live with. But I would like to hear from constituents that brought the suit on or would be affected by it. Ms. Scott not here. She told me, the boys are concerned that she won't be able to elect a black person in District Five. Impossible. So with those numbers, 55, 56% you can, it's possible. Now, is anyone from the public, would you bet him?
Yeah, if there's anyone from the public, I'm sure it comes with a lot.
Wayne?
I think based off what the last meeting was, and the objective that we placed on him, I think it's an excellent job. And I think that he really put a good effort into locating those, going above and beyond what was required and what we asked as a public. I think he did a good job. Based off these numbers, these numbers correct, I have no reason doubt they not. So I think it's, from where we are today with the participation, I think it's pretty good.
Anyone else?
As much as I spoke last time, I appreciate what he has done. We just want to make sure that we can have a person of our choice in District Five. I think he's done that, thank you for that, okay? But you can have a lot of stuff on paper, but I want it to become a reality, you know?
Mr. Board? Mr. Board, you allow me to stand where I am, Mr. Chairperson. I think the, the word I brought up at the last meeting was fair. And from what I heard, and with my understanding, and you're sitting in the seat, Commissioner Dean.
Yes.
And you have stated that you're satisfied with 55, 56.
That's our topic.
That's your topic. So then we have opportunities to elect a representative, that's what it's all about, be fair. I, I thank you.
Yeah, I, I have a question. When does this all end? At what point can we just go to the polls and vote regardless of race, creed, or color? I'm concerned for all children, the future of all children. Is this cheap, is this perpetual? Every 10 years, we have to change this map? Or is at some point, are we just going to go to the polls and vote for whoever we want, regardless of what race they are? We, we need a definite answer.
This is an exercise.
Does it go on forever?
It's, it is, you're correct, it's every 10 years, we are charged with reviewing that. So when the census numbers come out, we will look at the population percentages, and then we'll do these additional measures to determine the voter behavior. It'll just be something that we have to do. We, I've been here 24 years now, this is the third time I've done it, so it's not something that we don't continually have to do.
Well, I'm concerned about most anything the ACLU has to do with. I'm not real sure that the best interest of the country is what the ACLU wants.
Well, I will...
At some point, this needs to end.
Understood, sir. And I will tell you that what you saw tonight was the county's proposal. Is, I, I'm a county engineer, so we were presenting it as staff to the Board of County Commissioners, and the fortunate aspect was, you also heard the ACLU in support of that. So I think if you have any concerns about what was being presented tonight, it's not one-sided. It was actually...
No, I'm not saying it's one-sided, and I, and I would rather go with what the county staff...
And that, that's what is being suggested tonight.
All right, thank you. I'm Hal Murphy, I'm sorry to...
Anyone else?
There's any discussion from the board?
I just wanted to say, thank you, Kenneth. I want to tell you all, he has spent endless hours going through this, looking at it every way he could, Commissioner Dean. And he has met these targets, he's exceeded the targets, and I appreciate the dedication and the time that you put into this to make it right. I feel like this is right. I think it's fair. I think it's as good as we can get, better, better than we thought. So I'm prepared to...
Before you make that?
I'm not going to make a motion right now. I was just going to say, I'm, I'm prepared to accept what he has presented.
I'm telling you, I have reservation. This board has. And they're working their dedication, showing me some fairness in this county.
Yes, yes, yes.
I think I want to come up and thank the ACLU for helping us out. You know, I do trust and watch their activities across the country. And I think that's the time, the time we're located at. I appreciate it, Dave. All the help.
All this time, ACLU for being supportive and their input, and all the citizens, thank you all for your input and being here, and being a part of, and making sure that, you know, I think we, the goals were set, and the goals were hit, and maybe even exceeded by a little bit. So, thank you all for everyone being here and everyone's time in the, in the making this work.
I, I believe I'm clear, Mr. Engineer, but these adjustments were really primarily between District One, District Two, District Five. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So all these other boundaries that we discussed earlier are still in the same, through the conditions?
Yes, sir.
From December 14.
Yes.
We all gave up, we all gave up something. You and I gave up probably the most.
Well, it's quite a shift, no question. I just want to be sure, because some of these lines that I, I see there, I just want to be sure.
I feel good about it.
I feel real good about it. I lost a few constituents in the map changes, but that's fine. Because I know Mr. Dent will take care of them folks, just like I've tried to take care of them. So I'm not worried about it, and I'm comfortable with it. Thank you, Kenneth, for all your hard work.
Well, if there's no other discussion, we'll obtain a motion to approve the suggested...
Is that now, help me if I'm wrong, but aren't we going to have public hearings on this now?
I think the attorney will have to prepare an ordinance.
No, 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 no.
No?
Whenever the boundaries of existing county commissioners' districts are from time to time changed by the Board of County Commissioners, it should cause an accurate description of the boundaries of such districts as changed to be entered upon its minutes, and a certified copy thereof to be published at least once each week for two consecutive weeks, due publication being sufficient in the newspaper of said county. Proof of such publication or posting shall be entered on the minutes of the board. The publication or posting of such copy shall be for informational and not to be jurisdictional. Then once, under 12403, whenever the boundaries of existing county commissioners' districts are from time to time changed by the board, it shall cause its clerk to forthwith furnish the Department of State a certified copy of its minutes reflecting the description of the boundaries of the district as changed, which shall record a description of such boundaries in its office in a book kept for that purpose. That's what the statute provides for us to do. So, my position would be that a motion would be appropriate, second would be appropriate, a vote would be appropriate. And then, we would, it shall cause the accurate description of that, in other words, the map that Mr. Douglas worked so hard for, to be published for two consecutive weeks in the paper here. And then, once that's done, we'll get a proof of publication like we do for, with an ordinance, and that will be recorded in our, in our, and then we send it to the Department of State.
So, Honored, in, in the paper, do we only publish the illustration of the map? Or is it like in the Bellamy proceeding, there was actual meets and legal description of each of the precincts?
I think that would be the way to do it.
Oh my gosh, that's going to be a lot.
Yeah.
It'd be a, a long publication.
It would be, it would be. Would rather be a long publication to do it over...
So the consent decree that you're referring to, does that have to be approved somehow before we get to that point?
No. What's going to happen is, I assume the county and, and the, let me play us with the federal court. Say, hey, we changed the map, everyone's good with it, and a federal judge will say, oh.
So what I figured my next step would be, is I kind of warned Ms. Dana, Supervising Elections, that once we got to the point that the board had collectively agreed to a district map, is that she, because the precinct boundaries will need to change, and she'll be the one to decide how those things are partitioned up. And then, once she gets that, I don't know if you guys blessed that, or if she just has control of it, and then we'll fashion a legal description from those.
Is there any question?
So we do need a motion.
We need a motion.
So thank you for the suggestion map.
Just real quick, if there's things that we can do to help or, or exactly help.
Appreciate it. Now, Mr. Tilly, I said, hey, we talked on the phone, okay?
So I heard it.
So, um, we'll need a motion, so we have a motion to, 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 my Commissioner Dent for the second. Second, my Commissioner Figel, hold the favor.
Yes, I want to know, she, we have to do an ordinance, she let me know, but that's not what I read in the text.
I'll, I'll review some of the comments.
Okay, there's no problem to do that, but I'll do it if we don't have to. Because the publication of the map gives notice to the people of Tyler County. And of course, it's going to be a zillion copies out of one, because we're going to want, especially folks that are running for election, right?
Yeah, we'll be running. Yeah, we'll be running.
We're all, we're all-
The Board to discuss amendments to the ship local housing assistance plan to include demolition, mobile homes, and replacement thereof with site-built homes, intended by family cops.
Can you hear everyone?
Good evening.
Good evening. Good day. Well, we have a great news that we are being awarded $3 million and $60,000 to the ship program for disaster recovery for Hurricane Adalia. We actually have already received the fund already. We have discussed numerous times perhaps adding the demolition and removal of mobile homes to the ship program that's currently not in it, and we were going to discuss this when we do a new LTAS in '24, '25. However, we are requesting that the board approves us to move forward with an amendment to the LTAS now to employ the demolition and removal of mobile homes, the hurricane recovery funds, since we do have sufficient funds to do quite a few hunts with this funding. We have to go on and do an amendment now because the $3 million is included with '23, '24 ship funding. So to be able to use the four mobile homes at this time, we have to go ahead and do an amendment before we do the new local housing assistance plan for '24 and '25. These funds can be used both inside and outside city limits. And with the ship program, you're not allowed to do repairs on mobile homes, but if you include it in your local housing assistance plan, you can do a demo and construction of the site-built home.
That's really good. I'm so glad that it includes the city too, because I know someone that their mobile home was in really bad shape to begin with, and then after the storm, it's not habitable.
Yeah.
And they need desperately.
There's a lot of them that are standing in that way. World.
Because they thought-
And this is an ideal, you know, an ideal opportunity for us with these funds to be able to help all those people that do need help in mobile homes, and I was quite requesting that you allow to move forward with an amendment. It will come back to be the amendment for approval once it's prepared, and it'll go need to stay for approval, and then we'll be able to advertise. But I just think this is a wonderful opportunity, opportunity we have had in the past to help a lot of them.
It is. Motion to approve.
I just wanted to clarify that this amendment is only for the demolition of mobile homes and that they would be replaced with a site-built home, not with another mobile home.
Yeah.
All right, we have a motion. Let's take it to approve, hold a favor.
Thank you all for that. Thank you very much.
All right, 15, that was tables. The Board to discuss a friend, I think, from this-
Baseball field.
Yeah, baseball. Baseball, everybody. The Board to consider approval of request to remove the grass from baseball field number one infield, in the vice president's address.
So back in May, there was a discussion of removing the grass from the infield on the one remaining baseball field, and I pulled forward, we would bring some costs back. We actually have estimated the cost is about $8,000. It is within the budget. We just wish to know if the board wants to move forward with that project.
I would say the deal is, really didn't get the full use out of it to be like it is, so for me, I would, I mean, it just sits there, not that whole like that, but it's open to the users. I'd say we'll remove it.
Yeah, motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve on, do we have a second?
I'll check.
A second, hold a favor.
I've got a question. Where are we with tournaments?
There were several tentative dates prior to Christmas that did not come to fruition, because I think they were overflowed, so for whatever reason, there was not the participation that they had hoped for. And the hope in removing the grass from the infield and that remaining field is that they can actually have two-day tournaments, because that was the indication that we got from the softball, the big event director, yeah.
We also need to talk, that was USFA, probably, I think we get, you're all in contact with that UCSA director here, because I was talking to him, we were playing over west of here and talking about some of the deals that they get, but, you know, maintenance and fields, and maybe they paid the bills and maybe charged up the maintenance or whatever. So maybe we just need to figure out what other folks are doing to make it, to make our place more attractive.
I don't believe there was an issue with-
Well, not with USFA, this is a whole different league, UCSA. You want to get, we get entertainment from another league, based on what, I'd say we will, but I mean, if we can, you know, get the deal comparable to what he gets elsewhere to make him want to even entertain tournaments over here, because now that league is under that kind of over here, because the deal they get around to Austin areas like that.
So lower prices?
Yeah, the pricing of the field, you use it lower per field, but maybe there's some deals with maintenance and stuff like that that they get. So we can get to that and tie it up and get Dustin or somebody to communicate with him to go over that.
I know we had several, we had several tournaments scheduled, and then at the last minute, they did not have the participation they needed. So we had, obviously, we had planned to bring this back to the board anyway, so I'm hoping this will encourage, you know, two-day tournaments.
Is this the same thing as a couple of years ago when we voted to skin the-
Yes.
This is the same thing?
Want to be able to do that.
Okay, so, because I thought at that time that was gonna be, you know, what it took to do. But this will?
This will even help them be able to do some multi-day tournaments, but I mean, we do still, it'll even help, it'll really even help them for the one-day tournament, because right now, I think, they would like to, they used this for a couple of tournaments, the overflow. I think they had mentioned that if they had another field, that'd give them the six fields, and they can, it'll help them entertain and be able to put more teams into the tournament. So we'll just have to see, you know, the fall and spring and summer, that's kind of two different, you know, deals, so hopefully this coming spring and summer, they'll be able to push more in.
There did seem to be more interest in the spring than there was in the fall, for whatever reason.
Several venues didn't make during the fall that we were playing in, that we had to bounce in different locations, because of different venues that just didn't make it, only do make it. So we'll have to wait and see.
Well, this, whatever we've got to do down here, we've been talking about this for 13 years.
And we did make it happen, just in the spring, it was, you know, spring and summer, it seemed to be much more successful than in the fall.
We have a beautiful facility, and I'd like to see it used often. So we need to do whatever it takes to make this happen.
Yep. All right. We'll move on to 16. The Board to discuss appraisal report for the potential purchase and acquisition of the Spring Warrior parcel, intended by-
Can you unmute Melody? She may need to chime in on some of this. Melody, are you there? Melody?
I'm at it.
Okay, thank you. So as you can see in your packet, we did receive an appraisal report for the 3.95 acres known as the Spring Warrior site. The appraisal value came in at $435,000. That was actually, we had an initial report that was lower than that. We went back to the appraisal company and asked them to consider some recent sales that they had not, so the final report was $435,000. Before we move forward with any type of negotiation with the owner, I wanted to bring this to the board and ask the board if you would like to authorize the county attorney and myself, or a commissioner, or whomever you would like to move forward with negotiations with the owner.
Well, I think Conrad does an excellent job with negotiations.
Flattery will get you everywhere.
For me, I would be in support of moving forward for negotiations, you know what I mean? I know the appraisal is, sure, this is what our appraisal come back at, at $435.
$435. And Melody, can you help explain to us the nuances of how Treasury works as far as, as the value for these parcels and what we may or may not do as far as the appraisal value?
Definitely, definitely. As we discussed in the past, we are required to complete a yellow book appraisal, which is what is used for the purchase of federal property, because this property will have federal restrictions and federal ties to it for perpetuity, because it is being paid for with restore funds, however, that became part of the Department of Treasury. So we've got to follow all federal guidelines on this. We, but this did, as you know, that the first catch, I mean, we did not move forward with their appraisal, I just, I was not happy with their contract. We've been very happy with the appraiser we worked with. When we went back to them and asked them to revisit it with some recent sales, they were very gracious and moved forward and gave us the new appraisal. If the landowner does not accept it, and the board says they run in $500,000, and if the board chose to pay the difference with their own funds, we have to get approval from the Gulf Consortium and the Department of Treasury, because they want us to pay our appraisal values. They feel like that is the best investment to go with what difference is with a yellow book federally authorized appraisal. If you would say, well, we don't like this appraisal, we need to have another appraisal done, the Gulf Consortium and Department of Treasury have to approve a second appraisal, and you have to have justification on what you think your original appraiser did incorrectly. You can't just say, we're not happy with this, we want another one. You have to have justification, and again, it has to be approved by the Gulf Consortium and the Department of Treasury. If you approve moving forward with this, and the landowner does accept the offer or this amount, this is the maximum amount that we can legitimately pay at this time, we have to have an audit appraisal completed, so that means we have to have a second yellow book appraisal, review this, and confirm that they agree. They have a two-step process to make sure that we are paying what the value of the property is as far as federal guidelines. That will run between $4,000 and $5,000, according to Daniel Barontin, Bone Morale Group, and other land acquisitions, so that will be our next step. And then we also have to complete an environmental assessment on the property, and I don't foresee any issues with that, and that has a cost of $6,000 to $8,000. And those two things are required before we actually, before the closing of the property and the actual acquisition. We have sufficient grant funds to pay for all of that. We have sufficient grant funds to pay for all the closing documents or our survey. I was waiting before I ordered the audit appraisal and the environmental assessment to know that this cost will be accepted, because I don't want to spend $15,000 if we're not going to acquire the property, so that we have that money moving forward, that I roll forward for another project. Because that's where we're at on this. I want to again reiterate that the appraiser has been very good to work with and was more than willing to take a look at it, and we have reset property sales and adjusted for it.
I understand it correctly that-
Any questions?
Melody, this is Conrad. Can you hear me? Can you hear Conrad?
Yes, yes, I can.
I understand you to say that, that we're kind of locked in on where our offer should be, would be $435?
That's correct. We can pay no more than that without, if we pay more than that, the board has to fund it, and we have to have approval from the Gulf Consortium, and we have to have approval from the Department of Treasury with a justification on why the board chose to pay more.
There's not much negotiation in this there, you know? And reading the appraisal report, which I thought was copious, is that it was really hard to find comparables, you know, going out of our county, if you read through it, out of the county to find comparables, there's just not that many. And then he said, they thought the highest best use was residential, but the board's not purchasing this property for residential.
That's, that's, that's correct. And the reason they thought the best use was residential is because, you know, a good portion of it is not usable from a far end, you know, without-
This is the place to put your boat in, is what it's all about, right?
Yeah. That was a question I was gonna have, is how much of the 3.95 acres are usable?
Approximately two acres.
Two acres. Because this weighs, if I'm just doing this in my head, about $133,000 per acre, and if-
That's correct.
I think that's pretty close. Then, you know, if you've got two acres that we're paying that for that's not usable-
$265.
Then-
$266.
We're talking 3.9, I got not two acres. You're having to purchase the whole 3.9, that's what you want.
Yeah, I was just saying that we have about two acres that's unusable, but yet we're still paying $133,000 for it, so I guess if it's unusable for us, it would be unusable for anybody else too.
The use of that down there is so helpful to Taylor County, though. You'd be surprised, any day or any, today, all through the holidays, any Saturday and Sunday, there's a menu boat come and go down that bucket road, down to that program, and it's a real plus for Taylor County.
I just hope the owner won't get surprised, because we're really stuck.
I hope so, too. Because we really need it, we just, we've got a lot more people wanting to put their boat in than we got boat reps like today.
I agree, and I know a lot of-
Where are you?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I think a lot of people had hoped that appraisal would be a little bit quieter, but again, keep in mind, you know, a large portion of that property is not usable, and that's why the appraiser was dipped.
There's a possibility we'd be able to go again and fill in that other lot, other property, being what it is it's being used for. On DDP permits, when you get to the point on the permit where it says, is this for the general public, you get a real plus in it. If it's for individual, you can't really get a permit to fill anything in, but when it's general use of the general public, they do give and take a lot.
Well, if we are fortunate enough that the owner accepts this, then that's something that we could-
Work on.
-look at at some point and see if there's funding somewhere for it. I know we wouldn't have the funding, but if there's some source of revenue that would-
Some grant to get that done.
Melody and I, Mr.- Melanie and I discussed the development, the potential development of this parcel earlier today, and she believes that this would be a candidate for, would be at least one or two opportunities for, for funding for development.
Yes, I have a lot of confidence in the board of our new permit program. We've been very successful with that. We've also been very successful with coastal partnership initiative funding. I really think we could fund this project or the motor without having to use our treasury money, and that would move the development of the site along much quicker than going back to Treasury. Because if we go back to Treasury, you're looking at two to three years for development. I mean, y'all know how quick they move. And Florida voting and coastal partnership initiative, you know, we could possibly have that funding within a year. Florida voting has had some program changes, and they have a workshop coming up this ten, and I signed up for that to find out what the rural changes are and that kind of thing. But I think that would be two really good sources. You could also go to third grants, but if we're awarded the two we applied for, we would be ineligible, but that's a funding source. There's several funding sources out there that I think we could be really successful in developing that site if we acquired it.
So we need a motion to approve... A motion to approve the appraisal or accepted, or what is the motion?
Well, I think it's to negotiate, for the county administrator and county attorney to negotiate with the owner.
It'll be for the county administrator and the county attorney to negotiate the sale with the owner.
Motion.
We have a motion. For the county administrator and county attorney to negotiate this sale with this parcel?
We have a second.
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 Thank you all, and the rural infrastructure program is also another option, too, that we've been successful with. If we can acquire, I think we can develop, we can within the next couple of years.
Very good. Thank you, Melanie.
Thank you.
Right, we're going. Seventeen, board to consider approval of opioid settlement funding implementation plan, Jenith Byer, county administrator.
As the board will recall, we did, we are the recipients of an additional a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars for this year from opioid funding. It actually has already been awarded to the N W F Health Network to, to expand that opioid settlement funding that was awarded to Taylor County. As we discussed, I believe at the last meeting or the meeting before, the board authorized that Commissioner Feigl and I worked with a community health partnership group, community partnership group, to come up with the implementation plan that is due to N W F on January eighth. So we did have a lot of time to discuss. We did have one meeting, and we have actually prepared a draft implementation plan. I will tell you that once this group went through the process of discussing the potential uses for the, for the settlement fund, and again, we only have until June thirty to expend it, not a lot of time, there was still a discrepancy of about sixty-eight thousand dollars that was not assigned. So I did, and Lauren Pagan Clark was on the line with us. I did work with Ms. Lauren and Tanya Hobby with the Health Department to try to fill that void as far as the additional funding. And so the draft plan is before you. I think the biggest point of discussion would be the possible acquisition of, of a vehicle that would support mobile intervention treatment and recovery services. And Lauren, do you, do you wish to speak to this? I think you're more eloquent than I am about the need.
Oh, boy, no pressure there. Can you guys hear me okay? Okay, well, when I spoke with Dr. Redfield, you spoke to EMS medical director and our ER medical director, we really looked at people that are coming in the ER, and we see them every week, who are in crisis over opioid abuse and use, and how do we help care services to people? And part of the plan, I know probably it's not just to talk about, involves having a navigator, but really being able to get to people because people often can't get to us or don't want to come to a hospital, don't want to go to the doctor's office to get help. We really need to mobilize because of how spread out folks are and the, you know, the challenges with transportation. We're discharging people all the time, and we just sort of lose them or we can't get to them and get them help. And so we talked about, Dr. Redfield, we talked about the need for this mobile intervention, and depending on the approval of the plan, really getting together law enforcement, EMS, the hospital, you know, our social service agencies, and saying, how can we be effective? Because, and we've looked at the rural communities and what they're doing, and really mobilizing and going to people, it's been proven to be very effective. So we talked about really starting to see those people that are in crisis and working backwards prevention, which is the ultimate goal. And nobody has a magic, you know, way to solve that problem, but we really want to get people who are in crisis to help and to help them, prevent them having any return episodes, because we do see a lot of groups of folks, and so we want to be able to mobilize and get to them. And so I actually spoke to Dr. Redfield about it today, and, you know, he's super excited about us really getting around the table with the folks who, who are working with community members every day, figuring out how, who's the right person to put in the vehicle and get to them and mobilizing and taking them resources and help that they need.
So just to reiterate what Lauren is saying, if you look at our core strategies, the first section is medication-assisted treatment. The amount that would be in this plan is twenty-five thousand dollars to provide education and awareness training to healthcare providers, U T's, law enforcement, and other first responders. The second strategy would be expansion of warm handoff programs and recovery services. That would include the hiring of a navigator, who basically is, is that person who would potentially respond to the emergency room when someone is in crisis and try to be that point person to get that person to treatment. And to support the different hospital programs for transitioning folks who have had an opioid overdose into follow-up care. Five thousand dollars for educational materials, and then sixty-eight, two oh eight, sixty-three for, to support this mobile intervention program. And then, under prevention programs, we did allocate twenty thousand dollars for immediate campaign to prevent opioid misuse. And again, this is, we are really in a crunch because this, this funding has to be spent so quickly the first year. The, we have more funding the first year than we get in subsequent years. So that is, that is our draft plan. And I don't, Commissioner Feigl has been very supportive through this process. I think the, the biggest question is the mobile intervention piece. So if that is not something that the board supports, obviously, it's, it's your decision, but we have to have something in, in place as far as, as that, the money that's remaining.
What, you know, and I'm not saying that, that I'm against the car, but, you know, thinking ahead, and I'm thinking about the maintenance, the gas, the insurance, just some of the things. Now, what I don't want is for that to turn into our responsibility when the money runs out. So what would be the plan then for all of this, once, once this vehicle is purchased and the money is spent, what, what happens then?
Well, this is an eighteen-year allocation, and so the, and the amounts vary from year to year, but we will receive, like, next year, seventy-four thousand dollars from, from this. So I guess, Lauren, are you familiar enough with this program to know if maintenance, say, for the vehicle, if that's something that we can utilize the settlement money to pay for maintenance of the vehicle, or...
You can.
Okay.
You can, because basically, it's, it's how you're supporting that mobile intervention. And so when I spoke to the, the North Florida Health Network folks, she just said you just have to explain how you're going to use it, what portion of it you're going to use, and that kind of stuff. But, yeah, that, then, those are allowed to happen.
So, so each year, when we receive the funding, so that amount, whatever it is, has to be spent all of that year? It can't be carried, carried forward?
That's my, well, and Lauren, you can help me with this as well. When we had our initial conversation with N W F Health Network, they indicated they didn't even know what the process would be to carry forward funds. Now, and, and we also, we have the funds that flow through N W F Health Network, and we also have counting funds that we will receive every year. So they did not say you absolutely cannot carry it forward, but they strongly discouraged it. Would you agree, Lauren, that that was their, their stance of this one?
I agree with that, and I think it's, they, they need to get the money spent so there's a need, and then, then you can draw from the next pot the next year. I think they really aggressively want people to spend the money and get as much services out as they can.
Right. Well, that's, that's good then, because then you can allocate so much to maintenance and, and that, that sort of thing, and the insurance, and whatever else you have to have. Another, another good thing about having a, a vehicle is that would be then that law enforcement is not always tied up with transport.
Yes.
But if you have a competitive person, then...
Need to load...
Yeah, I mean, you know, that one person driving that vehicle certainly would not be able to handle that.
I think, and Lauren, I'll jump in if, if I'm misunderstanding, but my understanding of the vision, as it was explained after the discussion with Dr. Redfield, was this, this vehicle could be, could have advertising on it. It would be something very visible that would go out into the community and would also, it's like a moving media campaign. It would be very visible.
Correct.
And, you know, really be able to carry that treatment to disparate areas or, you know, areas, I mean, we have so many rural areas that are so far away from the hospital.
So it'd be like that Morgan, Morgan bus, you know?
And really, it helps in a lot of parts of law enforcement transportation, because that's a huge one. A lot of times, we, once we stabilize, we don't have a way to get them anywhere, and it does put a burden on law enforcement. But it builds the trust that you can, when you are more visible, and it's, you know, if we have Narcan available or things like that, if people are in crisis, we might be able to get to them here. And it's, but being visible and being where people are really helps build that trust. If you're like, like a community paramedic program, it really helps to integrate the message across the community rather than just having a hospital or a doctor's office or the Health Department. You can see this as a unified effort across, across the community, which is, we really talked about building between law enforcement and the, and the medical providers to really have one message and, and really try to access as a, as a team.
And, and I think the vision is for this, the person who becomes what we're calling the navigator, this to be the, the vehicle that they would utilize to go out into the community, this, the navigator would be an employee of the hospital, and this vehicle would be housed at the hospital.
That was my question, I think.
Yes, I, I don't, I...
I can't, right.
Do you...
And I can't tell you how many times we discharged somebody and they're walking from us, and they're walking a long way, and it's not somebody, people that should be, you know, after having treatment, that should be walking places. So if we can help build that continuum and get them where they need to be, and then follow up and get them connected to resources, we talked about telemedicine resources, mental health resources, so that people can access things from where they are. That's the goal.
So I think the way this would work is the funding would flow through N W F directly to Doctor's Memorial Hospital, and they would hire the navigator, they would purchase the vehicle, and the, the board would authorize this implementation plan, but if, if we can work it out that way, depending on area, I'll probably need help with the auditor. But the, the funding would never come to the county. It's not sitting in our, in our, you know, bank account. It would be, N W F is the funding agency on behalf of the county.
Well, yes, and we would need that set up so that it would be in the sunshine, open to the public. Anybody that wanted to see how's the money spent, they could freely go without any hassle to find out what's happened with it.
I don't believe that would be an issue.
This line has to be settled, Dave.
Yes.
And these lines have to be spent within six months.
Yes.
Motion to approve.
Senator.
Motion, now, a second to approve, I think.
I just want to say, when I'm here, Mr. Johnson, I'm just really pleased that this has become a community effort and not just a county effort, that we've got all these other talented people that have gone in, and I think that is just very significant. That's one of, the more people, the better.
And I will be coming back to the board. I, I was approached by Abby Lindy Dark, and they, and they actually have some needs for a similar position that offers opioid education to school-aged children, but we have enough funds in the county portion that we'll be coming back to the board and asking for approval for expenditure of those funds as well. It's a small amount, but that way, you know, that's, that's something that we can continue to meet the needs in as many, in as many areas as we can.
Yeah, I would even go further to say that anybody that has an idea that we haven't talked about, that should come forward with that, I mean, you know, input would be very welcome as far as I'm concerned.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Eighteen, the county administrator to discuss informational items.
I just want to, again, just express publicly how much I appreciate Mr. Dudley's work on the redistricting map. I know that he has spent hours and hours and hours working on that, and I really appreciate his efforts.
Great.
Thank you.
Comments and concerns from the public with non-adjointed items? Anyone on the line? Right. Board informational items, Commissioner Feigl.
I'm just glad the hall's open. And we can get down to business and move forward.
Mr. Depp?
I have a lot of things right now going on. One, Park Street. You know that little lot I told you about, that tree was down in, isn't it? Park and Shore, is that it? It was the Bellman's property, they bought the Bellman's out because it was watered, and, it's in bad shape right now. If it was in the city, the city had it, or the individual had it, they had condemned it and took it.
Okay.
Right behind the Bellman's fruit shack right back there. Another thing I want to express my appreciation to this board and being able to work and get things done. Now, that was a monumental task we had before us, and I appreciate the help. I know it was innocent, and all we had to do was just run it forward. Appreciate all the help that I get. I'm by no means a genius, and I know I'm not the sharpest knife in the drawer, but I just thank you. We can get something done. Okay, that's it.
Mr. Depp? Is there any update I want to breathe, removal from roadways or which ways?
Uh, no, there is not. So I am, I actually will circle back around with F.D.O. probably tomorrow. There, the series did retain some trucks in town, but I have not heard if there is a plan to remove any more debris. I'll know more tomorrow. As far as county right-of-way, I have not received any direction from any of the requests I made before the holidays about non-county maintained roads. I plan to reach out again tomorrow.
Yes. What's this paint on these, the debris on the side of the road?
The red X's?
Was it red or orange?
That means that it is considered most likely lane clearing activity and will not be removed. So I would say after the...
So I would say after this is all said and done, that it will become a code enforcement issue, I believe.
That's the way I wanted to use quarter portion.
Okay, that's what I figured.
I'm ready to roll the Calvin River. I'm glad to get started in the new year. Put that in mind.
All right. You have a question to go there? Second. Second, all right.